Hey gentlemen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Perfect. You got the Stripes memo today.
Oh yeah. Aw, come on here.
Or one person.
I was really expecting you to show up wearing like bearskin over your shoulders.
No, I actually got home yesterday, so I took a shower today.
Thank you.
We have.
And I thought about cold plunging and then leaving next to us till I put my hand in it. You know.
This was ice about fourteen minutes ago.
Yeah.
You did?
Yeah, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
And apron.
Apron.
Yeah, yeah.
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 I see. Gone up a little bit, but they are legitimate. They're good. Watch out for the red sauce.
Okay.
Pretty zippy. One way. Yeah.
I heard goggles two O eight's going shoot, right? I'm sorry.
Okay, we'll get off.
Me.
Okay, we'll go ahead and probably uh uh. W City of Bellevue planning zoning commission made an order Monday. Eighteen twenty twenty five at five thirty P M. Now do real call, Brian.
All righty, Jim Kurtz.
Yeah.
Christian Hugel.
Here.
Christian Lindbergh.
Here.
Christian Griffield.
Here.
Christian Bieseck.
Here.
Okay. Notice of an agenda compliance. Finding that the regular meeting notice and agenda were posted in accordance with Idaho code seventy four two oh four. Within forty eight hours prior to the meeting at City of Bellevue. City Hall, Post Office, and the city's website on May fourteenth twenty twenty five. I have motioned this this was adequately noticed.
I'll move the notice for this May nineteenth twenty twenty five. Regular meeting was completed in accordance with Idaho code section seven four dash two oh four.
Second.
One favor.
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, call for conflict. Anybody have any conflict with anything on the agenda tonight?
Um, three hundred foot adjoining to the property. Do you anticipate any financial impact as a result? No, I do not.
Right.
Mission would be the one to determine if there is a conflict, but. You roll them and see even carry it.
Okay. Other comment for any items that are not on the agenda. I don't see anything. Consent agenda, so approval minutes in the May fifth twenty twenty five regular meeting minutes.
I'm ready if you get it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I moved to approve uh the meeting minutes from the May fifth twenty twenty five uh meeting.
One second.
What's that?
Hi.
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 That was speed.
Yes.
Uh, public care uh action item. Uh, C U P dash twenty five dash oh one Wildflowers preschool at two oh five Opera Street. An application to operate preschool within a general residential zone.
Jim Kurtz uh. I somehow got this on agenda wrong, two meetings in a row. This is two oh five Chestnut Street. Uh, that's my fault.
Well.
It noted further.
Okay.
Yeah, there was no list.
Okay.
It was noticed correctly, we can go ahead and yeah, run through it.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, great. Let's see, Brian, do you wanna um walk through this or?
Uh, yeah, so this is a condition use permit to operate a preschool within the general residential. Uh, zoning district is at two oh five Chestnut Street. Uh, the standards for granting a conditional use permit are in ten fifteen three. I will walk through these now. Uh, so the first one is that it is a conditional use in the zone involved uh which. In the general residential section, nursery for children is identified as a conditional use. Uh, in the G R zone. A nursery for children is that I define as a facility targeting a fee to provide care for preschool age children, including state center centers. Uh, the application materials called it a preschool, but generally consistent with uh definition nursery for children. Uh, so then the next one is that it is harmonious in accordance with the general objectives of the conference of plan and title ten of Bellevue State Code. Uh, the cover of the plan doesn't really address this in any way that I could identify. The purpose statement of title ten is to promote the health, safety, but morals comfort. And general welfare to conserve and protect property values to secure the most appropriate use of lands to control the density of population to. Prevent undue traffic congestion, to prevent the scenic and aesthetic value, to preserve the scenic and aesthetic values in the city. Uh, to ensure the economical provision of adequate public improvements and to implement the qualities set forth in the conference plan. There really was no discussion of this in either way on the application materials. Uh, but I do not see anything that is generally harming of or not consistent with the purpose statement or the conference of plan. The next one is that it will be designed, constructed, operated, maintained to be harmonious with and. Appropriate appearance with the existing intended character of the. Area and it will not change the sort of character of the area. Uh, so like I said, this is in the G R zone. It is. At the southwest corner of that zone is you're not driving all the way through it to get into it. It's at the edge. Uh, which is beneficial. There's no changes to the exterior building, but um and. I don't see that it's necessarily going to be harmful to anything neighbor uh within the neighborhood. So the next one is that it is not hazardous or disturbing to existing or future neighboring uses. Uh, they are proposing operating hours from seven thirty to five thirty. There's pickup and drop off plan uh with five minute increments for uh. Two families at a time to utilize the parking area in front of the garage. Uh, so that hopefully you don't have a big bottleneck, all the family showing up at once, dropping off the kids. That they will, yeah, be staggered, just spending with the regular flow of traffic. So it will be served adequately by essential public facilities and services. Uh, again, it's an existing building. There's not they're not changing anything. This was transmitted to department heads for comments. Their original application materials showed the right away adjacent to the property utilized for parking. Uh, which uh. The I requested that they revise that so that it is not utilized for parking. I for what it is. Most of it's too close to the stop sign to be. Utilized without creating vision issues, uh, but then it's also. City property, we want to make sure that it's available for snow storage and drainage and sidewalks in the future and things like that. This will not create excessive additional requirements at public cost, public facilities. Uh, again, this is. No changes to what is already there. It's a smaller project. Generally, uh, more childcare facilities are going beneficial to the uh economy of the community. Submitted a report from the Idaho Department of Labor to that effect. That will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment, and conditions of operation will be detrimental to persons' property and general welfare. Via traffic noise, smoke, fumes, yada, yada, yada. Uh, really, the only. Potential issues with this are uh noise and traffic. Again, there. Uh, have pick up a drop off plan that should mitigate most of the traffic concerns. Uh, the noise should be mitigated through their hours of operation. Generally, we expect things to be a little bit noisy, hopefully they're not very test. Encouraging things other than driving the car to pick up your kids and drop off your kids is a great way to reduce the traffic impacts as. We can get away from the assumption that. One kid equals one car or two curbs a day, uh, then we can have a lot more preschool without uh. All the traffic impacts. Uh, so then the next one is that vehicular approaches the property, some design not create interference with traffic. They are using the existing uh right of way or the existing driveway uh that. Is it's mostly within public right of way uh adjacent to the alleyway in front of the garage there. Currently, there's only one house that's utilizing that alley for garage access. Uh, so then. It technically doesn't meet our city code or part of the twenty foot gap between. Where you park your car and the edge of the alleyway. Uh, but given that it is a small space and there is a three year limit on this application, the validity of the conditional use permit. I don't see this as a problem. It's it can work. With the perfect as is. Uh, so then the next one is will not result in destruction loss or damage of scenic connect natural or sort features, uh, which there's nothing in this that indicates any of that will occur. And they will be adequately screened from public ways and neighbors and properties by fencing or landscaping. There is mature fencing or landscaping and fencing on the property and it appears to be adequate. Fire chief commented that the maximum occupancy would be thirty people just based on the size of the building. Uh, the applicants say that in an email that their uh desired occupancy is twenty students, which is. My recommendations would be unless the state's. Uh, Department of Health and Welfare determines that a smaller number should uh be allowed. And then, yeah, the additional conditions, uh, if they want to use the public right of way outside the driveway for parking, they have to approve it to city standards. The permit expires within three years, which I've discussed with the applicant. They are amenable to. Uh, and then uh if we are receiving complaints and issues are arising, we have the opportunity to redo a new public hearing and we review this application after a year. Uh, and then uh just a note that any signage uh requested needs a different permit. Now, that'll stand for your questions.
Uh, maybe one question I have with the parking. There's two two parking spots in front of the garage. And then you have like some right away in front. Is it, but if this, if the building's gonna be hundred percent for the the business. And what about employees?
The employee parking, uh, I'll let the applicant speak to this, but they've stated that it will be in the garage.
Okay.
Okay. A ride or four of those parents.
Okay. Room in the garage now. Where they're big enough crowds to.
That's right.
Question.
Anybody else have questions?
I don't.
Yeah, I mean, do you like to see? I mean, it's I think it's good to have that the one year evaluation period. And then three years as well, the kind of three byways, everything's gone. Can you tell me something you do? Yeah, so I guess um at this point I'd open it up to the app and you you'd like.
Actually, before we head that direction. Do you have planned a place for snow removal uh for this parking sectional that's along the?
Along the street.
Along the street?
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, that's probably like uh.
I mean, all off. Right, because that's that's my thought is like. That's probably a pretty gnarly berm. To get to get cleared out of there. But. Okay.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
It is a two car garage, so there's space for two cars and I plan on having two employees at each time. Um, so that won't be, those will be accounted for and taken care of. Um, the only thing that I wanted to add for the parking was um that I'll have parents. I didn't put this in my. Like scheduled plan, but I'll have parents back in also so that it's easier for them to just exit out instead of having to back up. Uh, like in the morning and and um and things like that. The afternoon I'm not as like concerned about, but we'll still follow the same guidelines. Because afternoon pickup's gonna differ based on if they're half day or full day. Um, and then my plan is to order um those slow children. Signs also to have aware um drivers aware that that's happening right there as well. Those are my only additional things other than I'm comfortable with what I presented.
What what is the snow removal plan for that portion that Eric mentioned in the front?
Um, well, my brother owns this is um gonna do it for me, so he will plow it and then remove it and dump it. We can do. On the other side. Cause that whole alleyway is is my property too, so we can push any existing snow that needs to be right there. We can put right there as a spot. Um, it's not in the alley. But it's also never been like an issue before. Um, when I've had it cloud. Um, my neighbor does the same exact thing, so it's still just slim on our property and we have that whole inlet. On the other side of the gravel.
Maybe it might be easier to.
If you look at the picture, so there's.
And so right here.
So we're all on the same page, the.
Is.
Original parking plan that shows. Using the streets on this page has been superseded with this one.
Okay.
I failed to get uh. Page numbers on the PDF this time.
So this area is all because the trees are over it. That's all space and then inside here is all, there's nothing in here.
Okay.
So that could be dump off as well. Cause it's still my yard.
Yeah. Cause that that came up.
It's just you can't see through those trees.
So this is no longer part of the parking park right plan. It's just your spots here.
Then the snow, the snow removal would go left.
It could be right, like to the right of.
Of the.
Okay.
So there's, this is all an open yard. On the other side of these bushes, I have all of this extra.
Okay.
As well.
Isn't there a fence?
The fence is right here. So this is all open.
Okay.
Okay, so.
But then all of that too, like can you ask?
Yeah.
Front yard.
Yep.
I do know those that right away for those on those east west streets, pretty not a lot of. There's it's a big right away, not a lot of room for.
It is a big right away. Again, uh, they're not supposed to be utilizing the right way outside of the driveway. For condition number two, unless they construct two city standards, a parking area.
Yeah.
And do you? Brian, do you see any issue with with that snow storage uh plan? Um, given. The. Uh, discussions that have. Been kind of circulating about. Tuning up our enforcement of alleyway standards and. And that kind of thing.
Um, if that parking area needs to be utilized, there's gonna be an engineering component that goes into the approval on that and uh easements and.
Oh, I'm not talking about this. I'm talking about, we've been, we've been talking for the last. I don't know, several months about. Uh, like code enforcement and alleys and that kind of thing.
The snow removal plan for the drive.
It does this. Uh, does this jive with where we're headed in terms of code enforcement?
As we do not currently plow the alleyways, I don't know that we're going to be enforcing the no. Throwing of snow into the alleyways at this point in time, but that will be sensitive to visit in the future.
Okay, I'm I'm comfortable with that. I just.
I need worth.
Worth making sure.
And realistically, the only plowing that's really happening is just the driveway.
Right, which is happening.
Which, yeah, like sometimes that can be a ton of snow, but. And if it is an issue too, then I would have the capability of him hauling it off as well if it is needed, but it hasn't. Ever. Been an issue thus far for my house anyways.
And I guess the bottom line is you're not, if you're not plowing or clearing any more space. As a result of having the the preschool here, then you would have just living in the house, so. I'm comfortable with that.
Any other questions or?
Yeah, I don't know if it's important for code at all, but is it? Preschool and a residence? This is adding preschool or we converting the residence? No, it's a resident and a preschool. Okay, so I live there and then it's gonna be in.
Um, okay, we'll go ahead and and uh just point, open it up with public comment, so anybody. May manager be represented.
Do I need to stand a capoeira? Um, I'm Kristi Gerhardt and I'm the director of the Bellevue Public Library. And I'm also a member of the Wood River Association for the Education of Young Children. Um, board member there and I'm here in support of Cory and Wildflowers preschool. Um, this community, um, all the whole valley. It but also Bellevue in general, um, are in dire need um for quality preschools and daycares, not only. Um, here in Bellevue, but like I said, across the whole entire valley. They are lacking. Um, they are uh few and far between. They're it's causing a rural. Issue for working parents. They don't have places to drop their kids off. Um, Bright Beginnings, which is in a home, it's a home setting here in Bellevue, will be closing here at the end, I think, of this month.
June.
June. And um and then this is Miss Cheryl. She used to own a in-home uh daycare. Here down at the end of preschool, sorry, preschool at that end of town um several years ago, and she subsequently had to shut down. So in my tenure here at the city of Bellevue, I've seen at least uh four in-home Bellevue daycares. Um, operating and um shutting their doors. Because of lack of funding as well as some that are in the business district, so just for historical purposes, just giving you that little. Tidbit of info. Um, it's imperative that we keep a safe environment available for um children in our valley. As well as a place for parents, a safe place for parents to be able to drop their kids off. Um, I don't know if you know this, but the early years are time of remarkable brain growth. In children and lay the foundation for subsequent learning and development um going into elementary school. And investments in quality daycare and early education translate into direct returns. Within our own community and it's just um. It's just super that Cory wants to open this Wildflowers um preschool and I'm in support of it. Thank you. Thank you.
Um, my name's Amelia Lee. Um, so thank you for having me and um giving me this opportunity to speak with you today. There is an urgent need for affordable, high quality childcare in this valley. As many of you know, there's a significant shortage. Of childcare in the valley. Um, families are struggling to find safe, reliable places for their children to go while they work. And the lack of options is not only affecting parents, but also the local workforce and economy. Um, we need a more licensed, we need more licensed professionally staffed preschools where children can thrive in a nurturing developing developmentally appropriate environment. Um, as mentioned, Bright Beginnings is closing where my daughter currently goes. Um, and while shopping for other preschools. I found that me along with other parents are facing tuition rates of up to twelve thousand dollars per school year, which is. Averages to about fourteen hundred dollars a month. That's how much I pay for my mortgage. And I don't have that kind of money to pay for two mortgages or I buy two houses. Um, it's just not sustainable for a lot of families and it's forcing. Parents to make really difficult choices about work and finances and care for their children. Um, by providing a safe and professionally operated childcare, um, that would be financially accessible to serve the diverse range of families in this valley. I think we could really uh bring a community together and strengthen both the workforce and the early childhood development. Um, so I would strongly urge the commission to support the zoning decisions and the creation and expansion of affordable, high quality childcare options in the Wood River Valley.
I'm Cheryl the mayorman.
I'm Cheryl Zimmerman.
Can I get your address for the record too?
Oh, uh, yeah, four twenty-two East Highway twenty.
Name and address for the.
Uh, Cheryl Zimmerman, I live in Haley, so nine sixty-one to Fox Lake. Uh, but prior, I had owned my own preschool and after-school program for eleven years. Um, right, right, cuz I think it was nine sixty-two.
It's right across the.
It's the red house, it's the duplex, um. And we were able to use both of those, and I served twenty-five families at a time. Uh, and parking was never a problem, not once did I receive any issue with parking. Uh, if anything, I think it brought the community together. My school, snow, rain, whatever, I was always on that bike path going to Miss G's. Uh, we did things with the fire department, the police department, um, we were known being all over the community. Um, it was like me and all my little ducklings, and I feel like it's been kind of sad to see that Bellevue since I had closed. The only reason we closed was due to rent increasing and situations there, so we had to make that choice. Um, and it's kind of been sad cuz I just feel like Bellevue has lost that heart of having a safe place. Um, well-educated, uh, Cory is a teacher as well, so well-educated staff that are growing these next generations. Instead of just feeding them mac and cheese and watching cartoons, cuz that really plays a huge role as a teacher myself. When we get these kinds of students. We're starting way back into early childhood that was described and so much learning loss. So I a hundred percent back up Cory, and I really hope that the city of Bellevue also continues to back her up and support her, cuz we need more of that here. There are next generation. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I wasn't planning on saying anything, my name's Ashley Hillman, I live at three oh nine Cottonwood in Bellevue. I was here to silently support Cory, but I will say, I live directly across from a new daycare in Bellevue that opened up this year. And I have had no issues with it, I don't feel like I hear extra traffic, I don't even see the traffic. I'm often home during the day, if anything, I love hearing the kids outside playing, enjoying their time, knowing they're in a safe space. So I very strongly support this decision.
Thank you. Okay, uh, I guess at this point, I'll close public comment. Anything else to? Over?
Yeah, with such widespread opposition, I don't know.
Lot of deliberation.
I'm pretty comfortable.
Yeah.
I mean, all the safety stuff is through the, I mean, that's not us, we're just, if it's a, you know, an appropriate use for the space.
Can I add, I did pass my health inspection on Wednesday last week, so that's. There you go.
Yeah, uh, it seems like, um, you know, occupancy kind of match with a fire chief compared to how many they, students they wanna take seems in line. Parking's been revised, what's gonna work best for the students, I think those are kind of the two.
I've got no issues.
Yeah, I don't have any issues, I actually uh, grew up with an in-home daycare, my mom ran an infant daycare, and I think these are great business models. And definitely support community, so. Um, I think all the conditions are appropriate, and if we need to come back to this in a year, if there are issues, there's that pathway. But otherwise, I have no issues with the conditions or the proposal.
Uh, I'm going to approve uh, conditionally used permit twenty-five dash zero one for the operation of a preschool at two oh five Chestnut Street. Uh, subject to the conditions one through six identified within the staff report and direct staff to prepare findings of facts. Conclusions of law and decision documents reflecting this decision.
Second.
Um, let's see, I'm going through my notes here, what I'm supposed to be doing, um, so I re, uh, restate the motion, that's correct?
Uh, yeah.
Um, so uh, we do, we have a motion uh, to approve the. CUP twenty-five dash uh, one for the operation of the preschool at two oh five Chestnut Street. Subject to the conditions uh, one through six. I think that's quite clear, so uh. See you all in favor.
Alright.
Bye.
Bye.
Very motion passes. Yes, I guess we can move on to our. The next uh. Uh, action item of the session. You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'm going to put it up at this, and then text me if you need volunteers, so I got some cans already going for you.
All right, Brian, you wanna lead us through the competence plan update?
Yeah, uh, so. Uh, we're very, very early stages, so we have a like. Twenty-something person advisory committee formed. Uh, about half are agency representatives of some former others, and given the uh, required. Uh, requirements that you're supposed to look at for state code on comprehensive plan, um, and then the other half are. Local residents who said they wanted to be involved and participate. Um. And so I think, you know, what I'm wanting to get out of this discussion is just what you guys are wanting to see as far as your involvement. If you want a uh. Liaison between the advisory committee and uh, you guys, um. How frequently like me to check in with you guys and kind of give a progress update.
Um. So maybe a couple of questions, what do you, what are we gonna do all this in-house, or is there, or will there be a contract?
Well, now, I'm planning on doing it all.
Okay. And will you be um, then kind of leading the charge with the competence plan with that, that work group?
Yeah.
Okay. Should be running the show, guiding, the guiding lines there, um. Okay, and then any ideas? What, how long of a process we might be talking about?
My target is about eighteen months.
Okay.
How often do you meet with them?
Uh, I'm currently planning every two months or so to have a two to three hour meeting with them, um.
Okay. Do you feel like the, the community representatives, is it pretty well, is it a good spectrum in the community?
Like, yeah.
So ways to be tested for. Yeah. Um, and you can, you can accommodate more people on the committee, or am I more?
A limited amount more, it's a, I'm planning on having a usage or youth committee for, formed at the high school. And so they will have a liaison, um, you guys could have one, um. That'd be pretty much full.
Okay, cool. Um, yes.
Yeah, I wasn't involved in the last workup on the comp plan, I think that was pretty excess, or not excessive, um, intensive. Intensive process, um, to build that together, so do you feel like it's gonna like blow that one up, start from scratch? Or is it kind of be like, here's what we've got, what do we need to, are we still thinking we're on the same path, or you know?
I think there's a lot of goals and policies in there that uh, are still applicable, still relevant, still need to be implemented. Uh, so a lot of that's going to carry over, I think. Uh, there's going to be a little refresh on kind of how it's formatted, um, establishing a clear vision for the community, kind of the high level. Stuff that isn't necessarily required by the state statutes, but is still useful for stuff like budgeting and, you know. Everyday non-land use decisions that want the council to be able to look at the complaint and say, this is what it says we're gonna do, this is our, how we get there. How does this decision we need to make? Get us toward that goal.
Yeah.
And then once we, um, so once this first project is completed, kind of the full redo. What do you think is a good goal after that for like revisiting the comp plan? Cuz I think it's been a while, right, since this one was looked at again, this is kind of that, that's why it's gonna take a little longer, right, a bigger project. Like after that, is it kind of like every two years, we're kind of putting a committee together and reviewing or?
Um.
Or more, or is it normal for it to go, you know, last a while?
Yeah, it, even an updated typically a year to two-year process. Uh, get all the public engagement. Hour each, just. Getting good demographics and data assembled and all that. Takes some time, uh, but yeah, ideally you update your plan every five years, most communities, it's closer to ten. Um, I think we're on track with that.
Next.
Got another question, well, so the process, you want the. Once you guys, uh, the working group gets something together, then you run, that'll come to P and Z. Um, to review and make any edits.
Yeah, so once we've got an actual plan together, it goes to you guys for your recommendation through the public hearing process. And then goes to council with a new public hearing and all that, um. But that's a good long ways away.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And the interim steps, I also wanna make sure that we're. Moving in the right track to. That we don't get you a final document and find out we're way off.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I'm seeing, that's the one thing I recall, being part of the first, or this, the last revision. There's a lot of the chapters kind of have to support each other, so you can't like work in a silo, go, okay, here's this chapter, because then. That may or may not necessarily jive with a different chapter that's kind of related, and so it's tough to. So you almost have to wait till the end to see it, but then it's a big project for us to then tackle that and, and go through it chapter by chapter. And then make sure that all the chapters are talking to each other, support each other. So yeah, like how, how often do we are involved or, and, and that's a good question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And to get back to, the formatting is gonna be different, I think one of the things is gonna be different about it. Very different, it's not going to be transportation economics, land use, it's gonna be like. Goals.
Yeah.
And they're all gonna kind of lease together.
Okay, good, yeah, no, that's, that's probably a better way to format that. Yeah, um, yeah, there's some things in the, first, this one, they contradict each other.
Right.
Um. I don't know, does anybody have an, an interest, or probably more importantly, time and energy to, um. Uh, to be a liaison to the. To the commission?
Um, or is it reasonable for us to rotate? And like report back, like kind of someone takes a meeting sort of thing and gives highlights, or do you think that's like too removed from the process?
I think there, it would be beneficial to have some continuity, and also just logistically, I'm gonna send out a dual poll of. When can you meet, and so without knowing who I'm calling out on you guys, you know.
Mm-hmm. Um, I mean, like I, I'd definitely be willing to go to the meetings, but I don't know that I'm like the best choice to be like. The one to put in input, like I can sure take the notes and stuff like that, and like, and like kind of bring that information back. But don't tell my husband if I signed up for something. He cannot handle me saying, you know, for more things right now. Um, so yeah, I guess I can loop in.
Yeah, what do you imagine the role of the liaison being more of an active participant in the committee? Or just a way for reporting back to P and Z sort of what they're hearing? What do you think the best, best path is?
I would see more as an active participant in providing some expertise in land use process and. Making sure that the plan is gonna be useful to you guys into the future. Um, but, yeah.
And these are, I'm sorry, you said monthly meetings with the uh?
Uh, bi-month, every two months.
Bi-monthly, um, I, I'd be willing to step into that role. I think, and would these be evening meetings?
Uh.
Dependent.
Yeah, good, Jane.
I think Jen would be really good in that role.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
Thank you, Jen.
Yeah, happy to do that.
Oh, that's, yeah, no, it'd be great to be a part of it, but I just don't have bandwidth right now. So yeah, no, that's great, you know, if you wanna do that, then you are. Pointed.
All right, sign me up.
I was gonna volunteer you, so I'm glad.
Okay, cool, anything else with that then, or?
When's this start? Uh, the first meeting is scheduled for the night, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah. First public outreach is gonna be Labor Day.
And then, of course, we can still, any one of us can still participate in the public outreach process.
Yeah, I will, I always take volunteers.
Yeah. Yeah. So don't be bashful. Go out, sir later, do something else. Okay. Cool, well, uh, so our next meeting is scheduled for June second. Um. Is anyone not available that day?
Sorry, one, one day?
Uh, June second.
I should be available, should be, just a heads up, I'm out of town June sixteenth, which would be the. A regularly scheduled meeting day.
Okay, well, yeah. Should have, this, do you think something's gonna be on the agenda then? On the second?
Uh, got a couple of design review applications that I'm waiting for them to get me revisions back, which. So maybe.
Maybe not, okay. Sounds good, well, uh, we entertain the motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
I'm in favor.
Bye.
Bye.
It's fun when we got happy.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's for us or if it's for the.
Doesn't matter.
You're like, I'll take it.